Okay, for that matter. Would third grade have the same number of teacher slots as it does this year? Like classrooms?
Yes, in fact, I believe third grade at Strathmore would be good. I don't have the count in front of me, but essentially it's the same.
Okay, I'm going to the podium, but I do want to... The simple math is that another teacher is going to be in that classroom.
Hi, my name is Valentina and I live in Aberdeen and I'm here to say, Mr. Levy, Mr. Levy, you are the best teacher and you deserve nothing but the best. We all love you so much and we are here for you because you are the best teacher I ever had. I have never had Mr. Levy as a teacher, but I have had him as a coach in softball and he is so, so kind and nice. He cheers me up when I'm sad and I have a brother. I want him to have a chance to have him in school. We all love Mr. Levy.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Olivia Badewinski and I live in Aberdeen. There are many nice things that I could say about Mr. Levy. He is nice, smart, kind, and amazing, and many more. He is also willing to take his time and coach my softball team, the Huskies. He always cheers us on. I really wanted him as a teacher in third grade, but sadly I didn't get him. I am in fourth grade now and I really miss him, but I want other kids to have a chance to get him. Most importantly, he made me want to learn. Please, please don't fire Mr. Levy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Thompson and I'm here because of Mr. Levy. I would not have made it through third grade if it wasn't for him. My regular teacher, Mr. Shetter. When he comes in our class, he will say something funny and make me and my classmates and my teachers laugh. Please don't let him go. Children, children are the message, the messages we leave for the future to tell of a time we see, we will not see, for we are the future and we need to be able to tell about Mr. Levy and all the wonderful things he brings to us. Don't let him go. Thank you for letting me speak today about Mr. Levy. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tara. I live in Aberdeen. And I wasn't sure if I was going to speak tonight, but after seeing these kids, I felt compelled because a few weeks ago, we received a letter that said, "Schools are the heartbeat of every community, but behind those schools are the teachers who are the heart of the community and the kids." They inspire the kids, they make the kids thrive, they are invaluable to all of the kids. When my daughter goes out and sees a teacher in town, it will light up her day more than anything else that happens that day. If I run into a teacher and I go back home and I tell her, "Hey, I ran into so-and-so," it will light up her day. It is a disservice to cut teachers, to cut services to the kids, and to sit here and tell parents that if everything is going to be the same, it'll be minimal impact. I'm sorry, but no one here is going to believe that because we all see what will happen. It may not be next year, it may not be in two years. Maybe it'll be when my son, who's two, gets kindergarten at Strathmore and I see the effects of what's happened since my daughter, who's currently in first grade, you know, how much she thrived and what happens then. Maybe it won't. Either way, we're here to speak up for our kids because they are important and teachers are even more important because they are what makes them thrive. And if my daughter, who's in first grade, came home before this all happened and asked, "I hope I get Mr. Levy in third grade," and she has no older siblings, she doesn't really know him, but that is the impact that he has. So I strongly urge you to reconsider the cuts that you are making to the teacher cuts and the service cuts that will ultimately impact our kids. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Carpegoz. I live in Madawan. I stand before you as both a parent of a Lloyd Road student and a Ravine Drive student and as an educator from another district. I wrote this also before you guys addressed some things, so just keep that in mind. I'm here to speak today about teacher staff cuts and today's teacher shortage. We should not be cutting teachers, we should be keeping teachers. You say that classroom sizes will be minimal, but you're cutting 11 teachers. Let's say hypothetically, there are 20 students in a class, that would be 220 students who need to be moved throughout the district. I'm sure that number is larger. I can't find that to be minimal changes in classroom sizes, especially when student behavior is unadvised. Also, you said if students move into town, they would change the sizes, right? Well, we know that that's going to happen. We have new buildings being built and not for nothing, but all the older generation is moving out and my whole neighborhood has become young families that are moving in. To say that interventions would be taken care of in the classroom is unreasonable and shows that you are disconnected from being in the classroom. Let's say a teacher now has 27 students in a room, including those behaviors that they now have to make sure are behaving themselves. They are not reaching the wide range of learners every day in every single subject. I think the world of our teachers, let's not burn them out, and not for nothing, that's what you're headed toward, you're headed toward a teacher burnout. I look at the administration, for example. How can us in a small district have so many administrators at the top? And I know other people have said this earlier. I haven't had the chance to look at all of them, but maybe we could cut some high-sounding positions so that my children and my children's teachers are effective. We need to do better for us that are paying so much taxes to live in this town because we don't want to be delivering a mediocre education because then people aren't going to want to be moving in here and we're going to get into a bigger problem. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Reagan King and I live in Madawan. Mr. Levy is my softball coach and he is so loving, caring, and funny and kind. And he is awesome at coaching softball and he loves everyone. You are making a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jamie from Aberdeen. I'm back to finish. So I started...
Is there anybody else that hasn't spoken yet?
No, nobody else was... Crystal, right? Oh, no, no, go, no. She gave me permission, sorry. Like I said, I started this petition and it was received very well. Again, like I was stating, we have 500 kids in Strathmore, which is the core of what Mr. Levy would know with proudly some at Lloyd Road. 400 is a huge number, it shouldn't be ignored, of just people that said in their thing that Madawan, Aberdeen, or Clifford. Never mind the millions of Staten Islands like myself that never changed where I lived for me to calculate, or the old rich people or anything like that. This is a big number, it should not be ignored. You guys mentioned an auditor. I want another auditor because clearly after what happened with the security referendum, something's not right because you would say that that guy ordered it out as well. Big mistakes were there. As too money should have never been used for a salary, and if you guys did that, that was your bad. I thought that was for gloves, plexiglass, sanitary things to keep the school open, the vents and all that stuff, so we can circulate air and not to be calculated into every year thing, which we weren't going to get. How are we letting people go? When I thought, and I could be wrong, I saw raises for certain people over the next three years. These cuts don't make us look desirable, I saw that already. What can we do? How do we fix this? How could we come up with an idea to not let Mr. Levy go and work on a way to get our teachers back? Because nobody's offering a solution just besides these cuts. It's really sad when we're always cutting from the bottom. When the bottom people make the top people look good. So right now, you look like fools because you're going to hire people that aren't going to put in what this man did. May 9th, I hear that the people of the state of New Jersey are getting together to possibly restore some funding back to certain districts. I want to know, if we get any money back, where that money is going to first? And again, it could have stipulations such as that 2% levy being adjusted. I want to know what our plan will be and I want to be prepared for that because if anything can be changed, it should be changed because this is what we want. These kids stayed up late, they told you what teacher they want. You guys do ignore it and get three-figure salaries and everything else and keep cutting these low-bottom teachers, that's going to get us no place. And lastly, I don't want to play devil's advocate here, but I saw on the page and I saw what happened about a referendum for this. It could have happened, but I don't blame you guys for not bringing it to us because of the mess last year. But you guys who strive on giving the parents the word and input didn't give us that chance. And I don't know why we vote on a school year in November when that's so far in advance, when you can't tell what the next year is going to look like. So whoever, and I know this has been forever, this stuff should go back to the April to look at the next year and so on and so forth. I really don't have much more to say besides I call for a review and reconsideration of the employment of Mr. Levy into our district. And I hope that none of this is perceived as anything different than the parents calling into action what they want for the kids. I hope this doesn't, if an opening comes up and Mr. Levy applies for it, there is no, well, he may have extinct, so I would think that is retaliation if he wasn't rehired and we have the funds and he fits the description of a job. So I would just like for everyone to be aware of that. And do not do this. You are doing a disservice to the community that you are chosen to serve. And if you can't get together with the town, I don't know what else to tell you. Y'all should clear out, they should clear out, and we should start over because something needs correcting. The math ain't mathin'.
Favorite teacher though, because we love you, Mr. Levy.
My name is Abby. I'm in Aberdeen. So many things to say about Mr. Levy, but I only have three minutes. Even if I had three hours, it wouldn't be enough to talk about this wonderful human being. My girls met Mr. Levy when he was a camp counselor at Summer Friends and the relationship that was made was truly a gift. My daughters didn't have the wonderful experience of having him for a teacher, but we know what he has done not only for the district but for the community. When we found out he was being laid off, my husband, myself, and my children were in complete shock. How can you do this to a teacher who not only helps the school but outside of the school? And to cut him like this is truly disheartening, not only for the children but for the parents and the entire community. Please rethink this decision. Please fit it in the budget to keep Mr. Levy. I am sure if you all did a little bit of digging and you probably would be able to find a solution since this is going to be a very big mistake. Please reconsider and please let us keep Mr. Levy.
Thank you. You guys, people from the master, they look like it's tippy for a second.
My name is Ashley. I'm in Madawan and I have three children within the district. I had some concerns as far as having the interventionist removed from the schools. We said earlier that there was going to be help before and after by who? With additional help within the classroom, again, by who? One teacher with more students? Every child's needs are different. If you're already working with an interventionist because the need has already been determined, then how is putting them back in a position that didn't work for them benefiting them? You mentioned this with thing and said it's at Ravine. They have one special a day, don't have switch classes other than for their specials. And any other time, if their win period for them is at the end of the day when their attention span is already gone, how is proactive could that possibly be that that's our comparison? Lloyd has switched classes, multiple specials at times in each day. The middle school and high school have switched all of their classes and still have specials. So where is that time being built in that is actually going to possibly benefit them? It was mentioned earlier about fiscal responsibility for a summer theater program, a program, there's a bigger issue. Why are we having jobs posted for curriculum when we have two people who use that job that is? How is it fiscally responsible to spend over $2 million on a new administration building and not repair issues on our schools and maybe relocate administration to empty classrooms or renovate the old gym at Mam's to offices? That would have been much cheaper. You have toilets that don't work, bathrooms that have been closed, holes in walls and ceilings, mice behind lockers, sewage that comes up in classrooms floor drains, water damage from excessive rain, students and teachers' desks and chairs are broken and still being used. Where is that being considered and that being fiscally responsible?
Just, I mean, for what it's worth, I think part of our presentation did note that facilities and management does get cut quite a bit from year to year.
It's not limited numbers, it's disgusting.
How are you guys? Jared Zuzai, I live here in Aberdeen. I'm here today to voice my displeasure for the termination of 16 staff members. These decisions not only impact the livelihoods of our dedicated educators, but also have profound implications for the quality of education our children oversee. Amid growing concerns of student population increases, less teachers will only increase class size, which is shown to be detrimental to learning. Replacing our existing teachers with pull-out teachers is not the answer. Okay? I, like many, were caught off guard by the letter sent out two weeks ago. I was not aware of ending layoffs and sadly nor were the teachers affected. While we all agree a balanced budget is necessary, why was the community not notified layoffs may take place much earlier? Why was a preliminary budget not sent out to families for public scrutiny? Why wasn't a referendum at least suggested to the public? With all due respect, last November, you asked voters of Aberdeen and Madawan to pass a school referendum for school security. A referendum with a budget that was riddled with errors. It took community members to review this budget to find these errors. Why did the community not receive the same transparency for this budget? Why was the community not given options to help save these teachers' jobs prior to layoffs? The community deserves to make these decisions. The public deserves the right to scrutinize the programs you decided to keep versus the teachers you decided to lay off. I was insulted, a frequently asked questions flyer came out after the decision to terminate these teachers was already made. Frequently asked questions, you didn't give the opportunity to the community to ask questions. I also felt the flyer was trying to gaslight the public a little. How much the 85% or around 85% of salaries actually goes to paying the in-classroom teacher salaries? These are the people we entrust to make the difference in our children's lives. These are the questions the public has. The public wants to know why temporary COVID relief funds were used for children, teacher salaries to start with. Even though you said that that wasn't everything that the SRF funds went to, you acknowledged today that partly they did go and cover teacher salaries. The public wants to know why you haven't been prepared for this for the last four years and why were we cut off guard when it ran out? We knew we wouldn't get this funding forever. The public wants to know why it's okay to spend $1.5 million on a new school administration building if you knew we wouldn't be, if you knew we'd be in a funding crisis in the impending years? These are the questions that we wanted answered, not your frequently asked questions that are sent out. Why didn't we lease buildings if we thought that we were going to have a problem paying teachers down the line? That's being fiscally responsible. As a parent, I can't in good faith sit idly by and not speak up and watch our teacher population shrink. It's not good for my children and will have zero positive consequences for the children in our district. Not one person sitting on this board could look me in the eye and say that layoffs teachers will have positive, any positive impact on our children. Not one of you could say that and each one of you were put in this position to have positive impacts on our children. 16 staff members lost their jobs. To my knowledge, I only know one and he's standing in the back of that room. I'm sure all 16 have left positive marks on the students they taught, but Mr. Levy was different. He was the heartbeat of Strathmore. He taught my daughter during the pandemic and still to this day has a special father. Whether it was playing guitar in the classroom, which many kids mentioned, or dressing silly during a theme day, Mr. Levy strived to put a smile on each child's face. He gave his all to those students and that is why so many parents are here today. His caring compassion for the children extended far beyond Strathmore. Whether it was as a camp counselor during summer camp or volunteering to coach the 2014 Madawan Huskies travel softball team, this guy did everything for the children in our community and you're letting him go. Just yesterday, um, notes to me, on a Sunday morning, he showed up to cheer on my girls. Girls say he doesn't even coach on his free time for an away game. Things like that mean the world to the girls in this district. I'm sad for Mr. Levy losing his dream job, a place where he went to school and learned, a place he gave his all to, day in and day out. I'm sad for my two younger daughters who will never have the opportunity to have him at Strathmore or pass him in the hallway to get an I V. And I'm sad for the community. They are losing a great teacher and a mentor to our children. I'm confident, Mr. Levy, you'll move on to another district and impact the lives of hundreds of children to come. I'm just disgusted it's not going to be here. Thank you.
Tiffany Stevenson? I mean, okay, really quick, Tiffany. I did want to address that the central office used to be in this building and transportation, I think, occupied right here. And all down that side, when my sons were going here, that half was classrooms, this half was not. And now it is. That speaks to at least, but I don't really want to have an argument here, Tara.
Listen, I'm not having an argument about that. I'm talking about fiscal responsibility, right? If we knew that coming down the line that these funds were going to run out and we weren't going to be able to pay our teachers, wouldn't it be more fiscally responsible to lease something?
Okay, I understand that and I think you...
Instead of spending a point, like $1 million, $2 million to build the building and then gut it all out, more knows how much you guys spent on that.
Case, can you speak to this, please?
Leasing versus buying.
And also, in fact, it's capital funds...
Yeah, it's capital funds, leasing versus buying for the rest of eternity.
The money that we used to offset for Cambridge Park came out of the Capital Reserve account, which can only be used for capital projects. There was no tax impact, but that could not be offset for any salaries in any future years.
Okay, so capital does not include leasing though, correct? I thought leasing is operating.
Operating, yeah.
Can I also comment, because this is very serious? When somebody says we're replacing teachers with pullouts, that is concerning because that's not what's happening. Mr. Levy, can you, can you talk to that, please?
Do you have extra teachers that don't teach right now?
Mr. Levy, can you just explain that again, please?
So the plan is to, specifically to interventions, have those interventions done within the classroom with existing staff. For what I think would be best, and this is a stretch from the board earlier in the presentation, is for our team to put together a presentation specifically with what the plan would look like. That would help clarify some of the questions of the board, of the community, of the staff. That would be best served for us and I think that would be some of the questions I've covered on the seat there.
Would be awesome, thank you. And lastly, the budget process, this is what we do every single year, at least for the 12 years I've been sitting here. Nothing has changed as far as when to roll it out, when to review it in public and, you know, depending on the state, but this is a normal occurrence every year.
Right, no, I'm expecting that Mrs. Miller may have been talking about back when, a long time ago, when they roll in April, you know, for example, when I was a kid. But I did want, actually, for what it's worth, and I'm so sorry, just a second. Mr. Ruben could speak to for a second. What we can and can't put out to a referendum, because it's not just anything.
Well, you cannot put out, cannot go out for a referendum for anything that is necessary for, to provide a thorough and efficient education, for sure. What qualifies as eligible for a second question when it comes to educational matters really depends on where you peg that level, what qualifies for a free appropriate budget for a thorough and efficient education. I think to try to telescope about a one-hour lecture, a little soundbite here for you, but the main takeaway is for sure you cannot go out for a second question for anything necessary to provide a thorough and efficient education.
So probably not teacher salaries?
Not unnecessary to provide a thorough and efficient education.
But yes, something like HVAC, obviously.
It's for matters that are not necessary to provide a thorough and efficient education.
Okay, okay.
Tiffany Stevenson, Aberdeen. As an educator for over 18 years now, I cannot believe that I'm actually hearing you say that you're getting rid of the basic skills program. Telling the public and the board members that this is okay and that the students will still get what they need, that is not the case. A tiered system is not what students need. I can tell you that is very difficult. I have to now plan an additional seven to eight lessons each week. My class size has increased and I have to manage their behaviors and what they're doing along with trying to teach a small group. Also, when it comes to state tests, we often talk about the bubbles, the students that we think might pass the test with a little extra help. Well, I can't really focus on those students and the students who are behind adequately at the same time. So one has to go. So it's either I work with both of them, but the time that I work with both of them is cut in half, or there is actual a pull-out program that works with these students daily or multiple times a week to do what I cannot do as one person in the classroom. I will also say that I have seen the state test scores and that our ranking has gone down substantially and that some schools are doing better than others. But I can tell you, if you put this tier system in, all your schools will take because this is a program that substantially helps the students in need. On another note, completely different, on the school lunch deficit and how to get people to fill out those forms. Maybe in the beginning of the year, when we have to click on all those things to find out where students, teachers aren't, we have to fill out that form.
Thank you.
Our names are Abby, Rachel. This is a big mistake letting Mr. Levy go because he is very important to us and makes us smile every day. He's the reason we want to go to school and even though he isn't our teacher, he still feels like it. Please don't let Mr. Levy go.
Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. If we owe all this money, if money is owed to us from the student, that was a great idea. That should be part of the... And if the town of Aberdeen owes you guys so much money, I'm sorry. I owe Lampard $10 every day in my mailbox, I got a harassment letter. I don't understand what the problem is that you guys can't get on the same page as the other guys. And it has to be stopped, the Rs versus the Ds, because that ain't flying anymore. And if you guys don't, it's going to be a re-becrush. I know you guys don't get paid and it's not the bread, but you guys won't be sitting here because eventually we're all going to get sick of it. Y'all that we fought hard to get in will be out and the seats for them next. I know it should have happened already, but it will happen. This is not right, this is an injustice to our community. And you guys really, at the end of the day, look like the fools. And I know at the end of the day, you go home and say, "Oh, well, it's done." But remember, you saw those kids, you see him in the back. This is not okay and it will not be forgotten. Thank you.
Just to clarify, at this time, Aberdeen does not owe us... I mean, that was, they paid...
Can you say that again?
Yeah, yeah, just so people know, just to clarify that we're not saying that Aberdeen owes us money right now because they have paid on, eventually, it just wasn't on time. And, you know, as we discussed earlier, it did cause some issues. And then other part, oh, yes, I think we mentioned, either we mentioned or somebody else mentioned about the idea of the towns having liaisons and us having liaisons to the school, this, or vice versa. I'm sorry, it's getting late. I think that's a really good idea, I agree. And this is Stevenson's idea about putting on the forms on Justin. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? See you now.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
I just have a clarification question about, there was a question about any job postings that came up between now and the end of the year or the new budget and also about an insinuation of retaliation. Can we just clarify how that process works of applying for an open position?
Yes, please.
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that. So should there be a vacancy, which typically be created by someone retiring or resigned?
So, anyone interested in a position would have to fill out an application online on Fisher website and then we go through the interview process. Superintendent makes a recommendation to the board and the board approves.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we're moving on to the vote on agenda items. Ms. Pell, are we going to have a chance to just follow up or just last thing comments or anything? Is that now, later, or...
I guess there could be discussion before we vote.
Not necessarily discussion, but just a few things that I would like to bring up.
Okay, that would be...
Is this now? Is that okay?
Yeah, this would be the time.
Okay. No, just a few points. On the other end of the referendum, my concern is that we may have to go out for a referendum for building. So, the thought of going out for stamping right now, I'm looking forward to what we may have to do moving forward for adding on to our buildings. So, that's coming down the pipe. And I just wanted to say that the way the board dates work, and I just wanted to be on record, that our contracts for administration have to be in by February of every year and we don't see end or no budget, state money funding until the end of March. So, and that's not our time scheduled, that's the state. So, just wanted to put that out there as well. Thank you.
And lastly, can you just clarify what the board's role is in? I mean, that's kind of important.
Right, yeah, I mean, to clarify that, yes, we're, the action items on this agenda are to approve the budget and to approve the rehire list and, you know, setting the dates. I mean, there are some other things, but that this is, maybe Mr. Levy can even speak to that, that, I mean, the board doesn't get to just make changes. Mr. Rubin, excuse me, sorry.
The question is what?
The role of the board on this matter.
Personnel matters?
On personnel matters, yes.
Sure. It used to be years ago, when I started practicing back in the 70s, that the board could do whatever they wanted. They could appoint whoever they wanted, they could terminate whoever they wanted, they could listen to the recommendations of the superintendent if they wanted to, they weren't required to. All that changed around the mid-'90s when they changed around the role of the board and the superintendent in the personnel process, where they took away control of the personnel agenda from the board and gave it to the superintendent. The board has no legal power to vote on any personnel matter unless it's presented to the superintendent with affirmative recommendation of the superintendent, number one. Number two, non-renewals, which used to be voted on by the boards, are no longer voted on by the boards. That's an action that's taken by the superintendent. People who are non-renewed have certain rights to challenge that, which are able to represent it by their professional association here, who can tell them what that's all about. So, in a very small nutshell, that's the role, the role that we're tonight is to vote on to accept or reject a proposed renewal list that the superintendent is recommending or reacting to her recommendation this evening.
Thank you. I think a lot of us appreciate that clarification. Does anybody else have anything to say before we vote? Okay, see you then. Go with the... Are you all the agenda as it was? Yes, please.
So, this evening, you would be taking action on curriculum and instruction, item number A, personnel items number one through three, and finance items one through six. Ms. Vailas?
I have to abstain from travel under curriculum and instruction. And I want to, again, make it clear that under personnel, number one, we are voting, I am voting yes to the appointment of the recommended staff, but not voting on any non-renewals at all. Everything else, yes.
So noted.
There are no non-renewals on the agenda, it's not an agenda item at all.
Correct. Ms. Martinez?
Yes, but just like Katie said, I have to abstain from travel, yeah, for the conference. Thank you.
So noted. Mr. McGovern?
I got abstaining on the travel, but yes to the...
So noted. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
So, under curriculum, yes. Under personnel, for unemployment, I need to abstain. And then yes for everything else.
So noted. Ms. Warnke?
Yes.
Mrs. Gole?
Abstain curriculum and instruction, travel, and I guess...
So noted. Ms. Pell?
Yes.
All items moved.
Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business? Any new business? We see none. We have to go into a second executive session. Be it resolved that a closed session be convened for the purpose of discussing privacy, personnel, and legal matters, the subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of the executive session is estimated to be a while, one hour, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action will not take place. We have a motion in seconds to go into executive session. All in favor? Thank you.